Good evening. This is the meeting of the Zoning Board of, North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals, taking place at the Senior Center, Tuesday, October 10th, 2023. And I will read our COVID description, our Zoom. Pursuant to Chapter Two of the Acts of 2023, this meeting of the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals will be conducted in person and via remote means, in accordance with the applicable law. Specific information to the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website at www.northandoverma.gov. For this meeting, in-person attendance of members of the public and board members will be permitted. Members of the public who wish to watch the meeting live may do so on their televisions by tuning to Comcast Channel Eight, or Verizon Channel Twenty-Six, or online at www.northandovercam.org. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the North Andover website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive recording of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. If the public would like to participate in public hearings but not attend the meeting in person, please email your questions or comments prior to or during the meeting to That's J-B-A-T-T-E-R-S-B-Y at northandoverma.gov. The question comment will be read during the proceedings and responded to accordingly. Okay. We will now stand for the Fledge of Allegiance.
(Clerk) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The acceptance of the minutes for September 12th, 2023, and I believe we only had four members present at that meeting, right? Myself, Frank, Steve, and Michael. So I will be taking a motion from one of you.
I motion to approve the minutes.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. We are going to be taking things out of order tonight, so we are going to jump right to thirty-nine Richardson Ave. If I can have the legal notice read, please.
Okay. Notice hereby given that the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the North Andover Senior Center at 481 Sutton Street, North Andover, Mass. on Tuesday, October 10th, 2023, at 7:30 PM to all parties interested in the petition of Beverly Spicer property at thirty-nine Richardson Avenue, MAP 31, Parcel 19, North Andover, Mass. 01845, in the R4 zoning district. The applicant is requesting a variance pursuant to the town of North Andover zoning bylaws 195-7.3B yards setbacks. Table Two, summary of dimensional requirements for one side setback in the R4 zoning district for the purpose of constructing an addition onto the existing garage. Specifically, applicant has requested a side setback needing a relief variance of 9.1 feet. Side setback proposed is 5.9 feet. Side setback required per table two is 15 feet. Application and supporting materials are available for review at the Office of the Zoning Department located at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Mass. on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from the hours of 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Tuesday from the hours of 8:00 AM to 5:30 PM, and Friday from the hours of 8:00 AM to 11:30 AM. By order of the Board of Appeals, Alexandria Jacobs, Esquire, Chair.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You can just introduce yourself and then...
Yes.
Give us what you got.
Push the button.
Is it green light on?
Oh, you got it. Is it working now?
Yeah. The button is if you want to be muted.
I see. Peter Sierpinski, representing Beverly Spicer. May I request a moment of silence with regard to the events over the weekend, as well as the ongoing war in Ukraine and the earthquake in Afghanistan? Our prayers certainly are with all.
So what do you have for us tonight?
First of all, let me ask if any of the board members have any questions on what was presented to them.
Well, typically, we first have you just kind of present to us what it is you're looking for, what we're dealing with in terms of your obstacles regarding shape, soil, topography, and that kind of allows the board to get a better understanding.
Okay. Well, we have a home that was built in 1952, and obviously before any zoning regulations were in place. The lot currently doesn't, well, let me stop for a second and say that in 1952, mothers were still at home. They were taking care of their children and taking care of their homes. So there was no need for two cars, and one car was the criteria. The lot that this home sits on does not allow for expansion to the left side of it, and so the garage was set on the right, the single-car garage was set on the right. As is noted on the plot plan, it is a non-conforming use originally, or... Nonconforming, when zoning would have been active, and we're not changing the... Nonconforming use, the use will remain the same. It'll be a single additional car garage, and the, it will remain the same. There'll be no encroachment on the front setback. There are no soil condition impediments. There is no other opportunity to add an additional garage bay and be in conformance.
Okay.
I think that, I tried to present to you that nonconformity is not a new event in North Andover. It exists probably on every street that you drive down. We have the acqui, the support and encouragement of the immediate abutters, the two across the street, and those that are on the left and right side of the property. On the right side of the property, the distance to the existing structure there is sixty-foot, sixty-four feet, sixty-four point three feet. So that if he were to ever decide to build something on his land, he would honor the fifteen-foot setback and still be a distance away from eradication.
Does the board have any questions?
So the two...
Do you have any questions? Can you hear me again?
Yep. What's up, Ron?
I was just curious, I was saying, when I drove by today, I turned over a nice tree on that side. That tree had to come down?
The trees? No.
Okay.
No, they're, that would be a tragedy for sure. They're set well back. I think the, the, the one that is closest to the rear corner of the garage would remain at about, I think it probably would be between fifteen and twenty feet from that corner.
Well, that's in a Butters tree, right? That's not your...
Right. Yeah.
So a couple seats out from this?
Yeah, right.
So here's one of my questions. You have a pretty nice square lot.
That's a pretty nice square lot?
It, it's very square, in the sense of, what's that?
Compared to a lot of other lots, especially, yeah.
It's pretty square. So when we're looking at variances, we, we have to look at what we're dealing with, or the applicant's dealing with in terms of soil, shape, and topography. Sometimes, for example, there are situations where an applicant would have to put a structure at a certain spot because on the other side is a massive ledge that doesn't allow for addition to be put there, so they have to put it in a different spot, and that's why they're needing their variance.
Mm-hmm.
Because my question is, is what do we have in terms of that with this lot? Because obviously, shape isn't an issue. I mean, I understand that, yes, maybe the applicant might want their, their lot to be larger, but it's a very square lot, unlike, you know, if it was a triangled lot or something like that. So I don't see shape being an issue we have. Is there something concerning the topography or the soil that's forcing? I understand it makes sense. Obviously, a person wouldn't want a garage on the other side of the house, so I understand...
But you'll note that the setback distance there is, is eighteen point nine feet, and if we were to add at least just one bay there, we'd be left with perhaps six feet, so...
Well, and I understand you'd have an obstacle, even if you were looking to put a garage or an addition of some sort on, on that side. I'm trying to find, other than the applicant having a want for a second car garage, and, and taking out the fact that there's numerous other nonconformities on the street and in the town, what the hardship is here, other than the hardship being not having a second garage and wanting one.
Candidly, there is no hardship there.
Okay.
It is clearly a matter of desire to have, to be able to have two enclosed car spaces. We have the support of the affect, the most affected abutter.
Couldn't the position of the decision create hardship with the shape?
No. No, the, when you're talking about shape, you're looking at Al Prime. Remember how that is a very awkward-shaped triangle? Something along those lines? Or if this had, you know, a cutout of some weird sort?
Well, the only other possibility would be to travel either side of the existing structures via driveway and, and into somewhere into the rear yard and try to position it so it doesn't affect the rear setback there as well. So the hardship is, it is not a topographical hardship. It is one of space.
Is there the possibility of doing tandem versus side-by-side, doing front-to-back? I know that's not necessarily ideal, and, believe me, applications like this, where there's support of the neighbors, and in many ways, it, it's not a big ask. I still have to look at what the requirements are to grant.
I understand, and I was pre-conditioned by the Commissioner that you, the board gets very stingy when you get down into the single digits of setbacks.
It does happen.
So that advice was well-received, and we've tried to present as candidly. The circumstances, not trying to, to, there's no sand on the floor and smoke and mirrors, trying to create a hardship that doesn't exist.
I appreciate that. Is there the possibility of doing off-front-to-back?
Well, you'll notice if you look at the plot plan, there's probably a thirty-inch maple right there.
The rear setback requirement is thirty feet, and I would be pretty surprised if you could fit thirty feet to a front and back there.
Can I ask a hypothetical?
Go for it.
Ask anything you find. Since I'm relatively new to the board, I, there's like a sunroom between, or mudroom between the existing garage and the existing house. In theory, if they were to raise that and extend the garage closer to the house and make it just all garage, but keep the same setback that they currently have, which required a variance to get, because it's within fifteen feet, would that require them to come back for another variance because they're replacing an existing structure, or...
Are you talking about them getting rid of the sunroom area?
Yeah.
And making that part, basically making the driveway kind of go straight and like that?
Yeah, making like a wider garage in the area of the existing garage and the sunroom.
I mean, obviously, you're talking about ripping out part of the house, so that comes down, I think, more to the applicant's wanting. It would still have to come back because he'd have to come back with different plans showing...
Yeah.
Unless, of course, you're not dealing with the setback issue, then no, he's not going to.
Right. Well, that was sort of my question, is that, like, so existing, the house the way it is, required a variance of a set, for a setback less than fifteen feet?
No, it is, no. So it's a pre-existing nonconforming.
Okay. So if they were to, my, my, my question is not so much, like, to get the applicant to do this, but to ask if this would make a difference in how the board would, would see this, is if, if he were to just stay within the footprint, the existing house, does he then have to apply for a variance of just a couple of feet?
No, because he...
He wouldn't have to come back at all? Okay.
Well, no, because if he's going, well...
Except that the, the sunroom, as you referred to it, is, is not wide enough to accommodate additional garage space, so we'd still have to come back for some amount of...
Something more. Gotcha.
So I, I would propose that the lot area itself is a hardship, and what I mean by that is that this lot pre-exists the zoning of the area. It is substantially smaller, and if you look at, for example, the front-to-back distance, the, it's about seventy feet deep, the entire lot. And so if you were to try to build a house that conformed to the zoning, it would be ten feet wide, right? And that, it is, by the way that we have constructed the zoning, this pre-existing lot basically cannot have a building on it.
Well, I...
How about that?
No.
I'm not going to say I disagree with you, but based off of our zoning, it wouldn't matter, because, yeah, you're not going to put anything there. But you have to, I'm looking at it now.
Right, but, but my, my point is, is that the, you are going to have a structure that is nonconforming by a substantial amount, no matter what you do, even keeping it this way, right? It is already encroaching on the front setback by over ten feet, right? Like, it, it is, it is just simply not even close to conforming. It will never be close to conforming, but it is a proposal that is supported by all the abutting neighbors, right? And so to me, the hardship is the fact that this is a lot that is undersized for the way that the zoning was designed. The zoning was designed, the setbacks were designed for a lot that is much larger than this lot is.
Thank you for finding my hardship.
The pictures that you included, is, was that just to make a point in the neighborhood, other houses have two-car garages? Is that what you were trying to show?
Not necessarily, not specifically two-car garages, but just the fact that there was nonconformity pre-existing on the street.
For instance, that the house to the right of yours is like right on the property line.
Meaning that it's not just, meaning they already are in the, those homes you're saying are in a similar, they're, they had to have, I mean, they, in today's environment, if they were to build that, they would need to have a variance?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there's all, you're saying there are exceptions, these are exceptions in the neighborhood that exist today?
Yes, and, and I have no way of knowing whether those structures were built under any zoning requirements at the time. Some of them look fairly fresh, but everybody, we can all redress something, so...
I mean, I think, I think I noticed like four or five that are two or three feet from the property line.
Right.
They're right, they're right there. It's not like this is going to be the old house on the street that has a garage.
Yeah, that...
Yeah, they're somewhat, exactly.
The reason why there's still sixty feet from even this proposed building to the next building is because that house is like on the property line, it looks like.
That looks like it's an oversized lot compared to this one.
Comparatively, yeah.
Anything else from the board? Do we have, I've only seen support from the abutters. Is there any...
Jen, have we gotten any emails since? So...
No opposition?
No opposition.
The gentleman that called in, did he have any other questions?
That is Ron. He is a member of the board who is just coming in virtually tonight.
Just coming in?
Ron, do you have any more questions?
No, I have, I have no other.
Do we want to poll the audience? I don't know if anybody wants to...
Well, is there anything further from the applicant? Anything further from you? Or should I ask, is anyone in the public?
No.
Is there anyone here for public comment for thirty-nine Richardson Ave?
The applicant is in the audience, if you need to hear him, huh?
She can stay where she is, that's okay.
Unless she wants to.
No need to get up. Okay. Any further questions from the board? No, okay. So, we would now, unless there's anything you want to add?
No. Will you call for a vote?
So what we'll do is we'll, we'll close the, the meeting. We'll close this application, and then we'll, the board will discuss, obviously right in front of you, and then, if there's discussion needed, and then a vote will get taken.
Okay, great.
Okay. Can I have a motion?
I move that we close the public comment.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ron?
I'm...
Okay, we got Ron for an A. Okay. All right. Anybody got anything?
I'm, I'm good with it. I, I think the neighborhood is, is all nonconforming, so I, I don't think this one is going to take the neighborhood down, and so I, I got nothing, I got no issues.
Okay. Anybody else?
I would get all what Jim said, and then the fact that it's supported by the neighbors is, to me, a positive.
Okay. Anybody else? Ron, do you have anything to add?
No, I, I, I'm in line with the comments earlier. I, I think, you know, times change, and times run, and it makes sense, and it makes sense now, and I think it's a reasonable request, and all the abutters are in favor, so I'm good with it.
Okay. Can I have a motion? That's drawn you.
I make a motion to grant a variance pursuant to the town of North Andover zoning bylaw 195-7.3B yards setbacks. Table Two, summary of dimensional requirements for one side setback in the R4 zoning district for the purpose of constructing an addition onto the existing garage. Specifically, applicant has requested a side setback needing relief, a relief variance of 9.1 feet. Side setback proposed is 5.9 feet. Side setback required per table two is 15 feet. And make reference to...
Proposed plot plan.
Proposed plot plan dated August 18th, 2023 by Ranger Engineering Group to elevations on a plan labeled Garage Addition, Sheet One of One. Yeah, undated, but it has Beverly Spicer's name on it. And that's it.
And it was prepared by me if you need to make that annotation.
It does, it's not on there, so it's all right.
Okay. I am a no. Michael?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
And Stephen?
Aye.
Your variance was printed.
Excuse me?
Your variance, oh, yeah.
Thank you very much, and I'm disappointed that you were a no. You were a no, you were a no because of what?
I, I couldn't agree with the board on, on your, your hardship in terms of the plot.
Oh, okay.
Sometimes there is a no.
Okay.
But I am, I'm very happy that you were able to get your variance tonight.
Thank you very much.
Have a good one, good luck.
Okay.
Have a good one. We are now moving on to the Winter Street, Lot 13, Lot 14, sorry, Lot 13 finding, Lot 13 variance, Lot 14 finding, Lot 14 variance, Lot 15 finding, and Lot 15 variance. I think I've covered all of them. I need a suitcase.
The file's getting bigger.
Let's hope it doesn't get any bigger.
You're going to ask questions, and we tried to get your answers.
I'm going to start tiring somebody to carry it all for me. Okay. And if you can just introduce yourself again and let us know what we've got.
Happy to do that. Mark Johnson from Johnson &amp; Bernstein in Andover, Massachusetts. I represent the applicants in the three petitions. At the last meeting, actually, two meetings ago, the last meeting we continued to this meeting, I feel like I've been here every month for the last five months, but at the last meeting, there was discussion as to the history of these lots. There's a letter from Attorney Smolak, which came in right before the hearing, and I believe that letter actually related, referenced a prior change in zoning, which was a year before, as opposed to the change in zoning that went from two acre to one acre. I think the idea behind that people were told what they could do to protect themselves from zoning changes was, was fairly accurate, though the bylaw change that we, that we're dealing with here was a bylaw change that went into effect at the May 1987 town meeting. What I've put together is a chronology, and the chronology is fairly, fairly extensive, and that's why I tried to give you a binder to help you keep it together, a table of contents, and a summary. We've also submitted a letter from Andover Consultants in a plan that the board requested relative to drainage. Dennis Gogriety from Andover Consultants, at the last minute, was not able to make tonight's meeting. If you have engineering questions or questions on that plan, I would ask you to put that on for the next, next agenda, and we can hopefully have Dennis present. We also submitted a letter from North Environmental relative to the wetlands on the site, and what land would be considered a resource area within the Wetlands Protection Act, and what would be a resource area within the meaning of the local bylaw. And that brings us back to the conversation a number of months ago on a different petition as to what the Andor means, and that letter indicates that, as to the wetlands identified in the letter and on the plans, there would not be a, a resource area under both the Wetlands Protection Act as well as the local bylaw. The documents that we have provided to you, along with updated tax information, reflects that from the period of 92 to 2023, Lot 14 paid in excess of $74,000 worth of real estate taxes, Lot 15 in excess of $75,000 worth of real estate taxes, and Lot 13 in excess of $72,000 worth of real estate taxes. These lots were, have been assessed since the plan, the May 1, 1987 plan was eventually approved as separate buildable lots. They've been assessed as separate parcels with a separate valuation and a separate tax bill. The, there was a question as to the May 1st plan, May 1st, 1987 plan, and when was, when that was approved, and what the various delays might have been in the recording of it. This is registered land. The plan was, was submitted to the Planning Board on May 1, 1987. The Planning Board did not act within the time period under the statute, and as a result, on October 21, 1987, the town clerk issued a certification advising the plan is deemed approved due to the North Andover Planning Board's failure to notify the applicant and the town clerk within 14 days of their action. And based upon that, that certification, the plan went through the, the land court process, which is a, a fairly complicated process to eventually get a plan approved. And I provided with you, provided in a package, the history of the various plans in land court, the history of this plan, and then eventually, the plan was filed in land court. the history of this plan, and then eventually, um, the plan was filed in land court and came out of land court in, um, came out of land court in, give me one second.
This, this is the date?
Came out of land court about, about a year and a half later. So, and at that point, lots were put into separate ownership, which is something that can be done. And they were put into separate ownership with, with different owners of the various lots. Attorney John Oakley is here tonight, and he can explain if the board has any questions as to how those trusts were set up. I've given you copies of them, and how the beneficiaries were different between the various trusts. It's, it's our belief that these lots have been, have grandfathering protection, that these lots have been assessed and as, as buildable lots since the plan went on. Taxes have been paid on the lots as well, substantial amount of money. And the town had indicated, and I think some of the letters you received, that the putting lots into separate ownership would protect them for future investment and the ability to, to eventually sell these lots as individual lots. There are a number of properties that were sold off of that same plan over the years. Building permits were issued, and the property, properties were conveyed. I provided two, within the package, copies of those deeds. And the date I was looking for was the, um, it looks like November twenty-sixth of ninety-one is when the plan eventually made it to the registry, and then subsequent to that, the various properties were sold out. One of the principles that the courts have, have applied is that, um, that property owners have to be treated similarly. You can't treat one property owner different. The issuing of building permits for the, um, basically after the May fourth eighty-seven zoning, when they, when the zoning increased from two, uh, one acre to two acre would be consistent with other lots being similarly situated, being treated differently. And the issuance of those building permits is evidence that to not issue it in this case, there would not be uniformity in the enforcement of the zoning bylaw. And that's apart from the question as to whether or not the lots are entitled to grandfathering protection. And the courts have, have repeatedly talked about the critical uniformity requirements in the way bylaws are, are treated, the way people are treated within the town. That's a, that's a summary in some ways of the, of what we've submitted to the board. If anybody has questions on what we submitted, we gave you a summary, we gave you a table of contents, and then we gave you a tab binder of all the documents that were reflected within, um, within the binder. And apart from, we believe that these lots were separate lots, entitled to a building permit separately, and entitled to comply with a one acre zoning, we, and, and there were substantial sums paid based upon our belief, and the town accepted taxes of a fair amount of money on each lot over the years, not as an unbuildable lot, but as a buildable lot. And, and the whole, and the argument of uniformity regarding the standards enforcements of the zoning bylaw. If, if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I'm gonna be the first one to throw them all out. My first question is, who is Ellen Sweeney? Is that Ms. Cashman, your client?
You wanna come up? Come on in.
He doesn't speak my name.
Sweeney was my married name, and I took my.
So you are also Ellen Cashman, Ellen Sweeney?
I am.
Okay.
You met two people tonight.
I've met two people tonight. This is tab eight. Where did this come from?
Where did tab eight come from?
Yep.
Tab eight came from land court.
Okay. I have numerous issues with this application. Numerous. Aside from the fact that I don't think it is right for me to have to spend seven to eight hours digging because I'm not provided all of the information. Why was this plan, tab eight, not the one that you initially submitted with the application?
Get back to which it is.
Because this is four zero nine zero five D.
That's correct.
But this is not the four zero nine zero five D plan that you submitted when you submitted your application.
Land court had a number of plans labeled D, and wasn't able to get the full file out of land court. Pick up the history, pick up the history of the plans.
If we look at the plan that you submitted with the applications for lots thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, they are missing the surveyor's signature. They are also missing any and every indication that this was approved from anybody from the town of North Andover. I, I can look at this piece of paper. I can look at this. It has a date, May first nineteen eighty-seven. It is the four zero nine zero five D plan that was submitted. The only signatures that are on here is from the registry, from Northern, North Registry, District of Essex County. There's a land registration office stamp, and then there's another Essex North stamp. So looking at this at first glance, somebody who deals with plans, this is something that, there needs to be something from the town. There needs to be something from the surveyor, which was evident because we now got this plan in the packet.
Yeah, at, at the meeting, two meetings ago, questions were raised as to the history of the lot. And, and I indicated to you, we would try to track down the history of the lot. And we were able to request the plans for a while from land court to provide it, and that's why we provided it within the package.
But the one that was provided initially doesn't hold at least legal significance of this being granted by the town and being approved and being done with a surveyor's signature.
I, I understand, and you had, you raised a question and that.
That, that's my, that's my first niche of this.
Nope, and that's why we went and did more digging on it to find, to find the history of the lot.
And, and I guess my point being is that the one that holds a legal significance, being a signature from planning, or in this case, what you're taking is the signature from a town clerk, and the surveyor should have been the first one that was submitted.
And I don't disagree with you that we had trouble finding it, and we found it. In order to, when we went back into the history of it, which came out of the last, the last meeting, we talked about it.
A few other problems I have.
Go ahead. I'm sitting here waiting.
Mr. Smolak's letter, attorney, I'm sorry, Attorney Vaughn's letter seems to mishmash what actually took place at town meeting and when it took place at town meeting. So?
The, the best, the best I can.
Well, hold on. Hold on. I don't want you to.
Nope, go ahead.
To dig too far here. When you first came to us, we were informed that what we were being given was an approved plan prior to the zoning changes. The issues you have in front of you, or that are in front of us, correct me if I'm wrong, is the lot size, the frontage, and the CBA.
That is correct.
Okay. We were told that this plan, whichever one we want to look at, four zero nine zero five D, was approved prior to those zoning changes.
That is correct.
Okay. In nineteen eighty-six, April twenty-sixth of nineteen eighty-six, there was a town meeting.
And that was a different zoning change.
That was a zoning change for the CBA.
That was a zoning change, that, that's what I indicated when I started today.
Okay, so that's the one that Mr. Attorney Vaughn, I believe, addresses, okay? That was voted two hundred and ninety-two, four, and eighty-four against. We're a town, so the town meeting and the votes that take place matter to me when we're looking at these things. The next zoning change that took place was May fourth nineteen eighty-seven.
That's correct.
That addressed the one lot to two lot.
That's correct.
Okay. That was seven hundred and forty-seven, four, and a hundred and thirteen against.
I'll take your word for it.
Trust me. I've had to do the research on it. It's... May first, an application was put into the zone, into the planning board. And it was requesting for a four zero nine zero five D to be approved by the planning board. It was done as a Form A. This was, the planning board did not meet until May eleventh nineteen eighty-seven. That is after the town meeting.
That's correct. It was submitted prior to.
It was submitted, but it was not approved.
It was submitted prior to, and, and it was eventually approved.
Hold on, hold on. Planning then denied it.
No.
Planning. I have the minutes from the planning meeting. Daleen Winter Street, Sweeney, create lots eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. Motion by Paul Headstorm to deny the Form A plan because it contains a subdivision. Second, John Simmons, vote unanimous.
What was the date of that meeting?
This was May eleventh nineteen eighty-seven.
Okay, because we have a certification that was filed in land court of the town clerk on October twenty-first saying the planning board failed to act within the fourteen days.
So, I, I haven't gotten to that one yet. So, that was denied. Now, I will give you that planning was supposed to notify the town and the applicant within twenty-one days. Twenty-one. They did not do that because they, they didn't provide notice to the town until June second. So I'll, I'll give you that.
Yeah, just, just so we're clear, the certification from the town clerk indicated they had to act within fourteen days.
Fourteen days. And here comes my added problem. The town doesn't have any record of this. And planning doesn't have any record of this. So I've currently reached out to town council because when I'm looking at this, I honestly can't tell you if that's October twenty-first nineteen eighty-seven or nineteen eighty-nine, because it looks like a nine to me. See, I don't know, I don't know why we're not getting blowups here.
Well, I can give you, if you want blowups, I'm happy to give you.
If there's a date I can't read, because I'm, I'm frustrated that I feel, I feel like the board has been misled throughout this entire process in what took place and when it took place.
I, I, I'm offended by that because I've tried to answer, let me just finish. I've tried to answer the questions the board has had by going further into records to try to pull out what exactly happened, and then provided copies to the board. And, and I've done that at a considerable time to get everything out of land court and the like. We have, we have certain documents that we have. You know, I've gotten ahold of the engineer who did the work back then, who's retired. I tried getting his file out of the office. They don't have it. So I have documents that reflect when it was filed. I have documents that reflect that the planning board didn't act. Now, if they did, they did. The town clerk certified that they didn't, and then we have, we've taken this through the land, let me just finish.
That's not what town clerk said, though. I don't want you misrepresenting what the statement says. It doesn't say that they didn't, they didn't inform.
Failure to notify. Failure to notify.
They acted. They took a vote.
And, I'm just saying, the failure to notify was deemed to be an approval. That, I mean, that's.
And I, I can understand. I, I question the fourteen days because everybody I have talked to in town hall can't understand fourteen days when it's always been twenty-one.
I can just tell you what, you know, what the, how the town clerk's certification was, and then that went through land court. So I don't think there's any question that these lots were approved on a land court plan. I don't think there's any question that, that these lots were eventually conveyed out, and I don't think there's any question there's a substantial amount of money paid in taxes on each of these lots.
I'm not caring about, but the taxes paid and the money paid, I understand that's a significance to your client, but that has absolutely zero bearing on, on the variances. Zero bearing.
I disagree with you on that, because, because under the variance, it's financial or otherwise, and, and there's a history within these lots, and there seems to be a history based upon letters that were sent, sent to this board as, as to, you know, certain representations that were made, and the way certain people were treated in different lots that were, you know, that were given building permits. Now, let, let me just finish, because I, I, you know, I, I understand you're frustrated on this, you know, and we did a lot of work to try to put this together. If we didn't blow up some plans for you, I was able to read them. I didn't, I didn't think that was going to be an issue, but we went back in to try to trace the history, and I think what's relevant for the purposes of, of the variance applications would be how these lots were eventually, were approved, and that they were approved, the plan was approved. Whether, whether it was approved by a vote of the planning board or a failure to act, it was approved. The plan went through the land court process. The plan went, the plan was recorded, and ultimately, lots were sold off of this plan, and building permits were issued. And the town continued to assess these lots as separate buildable lots. That, that's the history of these three lots, and, and taxes, and taxes were paid. Now, whether or not the zoning amendment in Attorney Smolak's office's letter, you know, was a different zoning, it was. And I said that when I came in here, when I came in here tonight, that that dealt with the, the other issue. But in terms of the zoning change that went from one acre to two acre, that was the May, the May.
May fourth nineteen eighty-seven.
And, and I don't think there's any question the plan was filed before, and, and that the plan, the clerk gave a certification on the plan, which allowed the plan to go through the land court process, be recorded at the registry, and lots be conveyed off of it. That, that's, that, I think that's the history that we've provided. Now, you can, we can have a difference of opinion as to what that history means, but I think the, I think what I've gone through in terms of the, the history of this is accurate.
Attorney Johnson, it, it bothers me that I look at this, and I'm not, this isn't a matter of interpretation. This is a matter of April twenty-sixth nineteen eighty-six, a town meeting took place. The CBA changed. Done deal. There's no question about that. There's no interpretation to that. That's what it was. Fast forward to May fourth, May fourth nineteen eighty-seven, another town meeting took place and zoning was changed. Even if you want to go with this was approved, this was October of eighty-seven.
See, that's where we have a difference of opinion on.
You cannot sit here and come in to me and say, "This was approved prior to zoning changes."
It was submitted, and the appro, let, let me just finish. We can have a difference, we can have a difference of opinion on, on.
Submitting doesn't mean approval in any shape, form of anything.
It was submitted to the, to the planning board prior to the vote on the zoning article, and we believe that that, that that gives it protection. And, and let me just finish. And, and the fact that the town clerk signed a certification post-town meeting vote is further evidence, and let me just finish.
I, I'm letting you finish.
And, and the fact that it went through land court, land court issued the plan, the plan got recorded, the assessor's office changed the maps, the assessor's office started assessing each of these as separate lots.
It's the assessor's office.
It, it is. It all has, it all has legal significance.
It has, it may have legal significance in terms of what the assessor's office does. It has no legal significance here.
And, and we disagree, and I disagree with you on that. You, I mean, obviously, you, you have your opinion. You're on the board. You have a vote. I don't, but I can tell you that I, I believe that we have a, a difference in how we look at this. And I look at this as the plan got submitted prior to the zoning change, it got subsequently approved, and I believe it would relate back to the zoning change, to the date that it was submitted. And we can have a difference of opinion on that, but that's how I look at it.
Did you get a copy? Attorney Smolak had emailed, I believe it was the board, Jen? It was Attorney Smolak was today, that that attachment came through?
Yes.
Attorney Smolak provided the board with a, a letter from the building department. You, you want to talk about approvals and so on and so forth. And this addresses the fact that, I'm gonna cut out the beginning part because it's not necessarily relevant. Thereafter, it appears that Lot A, A one and Lot A two were conveyed to separate groups of parties by deeds dated April thirtieth nineteen eighty-seven. At the time, that prior to the zoning change. This, that.
That, that has nothing to do with our property.
What I'm saying is that this is a situation where it was done prior to. I, I don't see how an application is, is, you're standing for, because it, had it gone through planning? Let's go with the, it went through planning like it actually did, and it, it bothers me that throughout everything I, I read, we convene, we don't mention. And it, it bothers me that throughout everything I, I read, we convene, we don't mention anything about the fact that this went through planning. We don't mention anything. You talk about the history of the property. We fail to mention how we actually got to this.
Because-
And how we got to this was by going to planning. And planning, someone in planning, not getting the documents to the town clerk in time.
The, and we've indicated that the plan was approved based upon a certification of the town clerk. We're not, well, look, we're, we're very clear with you on the various states. But, but we're, we have a difference of opinion as to whether or not the eventual approval relates back to the May 1st filing date, which gave this plan protection. And we, we have a difference of opinion on that. The only thing I can tell you is that there were a number of lots that were conveyed off that plan. The plan made it through, made it through Land Court. And they were set up as separate lots and taxes separate lots.
And I have no control, I have no control over Land Court. I have no control over a building inspector issuing building permits or occupancy permits. I sit here in honesty and look at it and go, "They shouldn't have."
Well, what, whether or not they should have or shouldn't have, they did. And my, and-
But I'm not going to continue a wrong just because it's been done.
Can I finish? And, and my client, my clients took certain actions in reliance upon it, paid, what are we talking about? Over $200,000 worth of, let me, over $200,000 worth of taxes. And you can say that's her problem, not your problem, okay? But, but I will say that she's paid over $200,000 worth of taxes over the years based upon her belief that there were separate lots that were going to, that would, would remain as buildable lots. Now, I'm in your opinion, I can pretty much, I pretty much understand your opinion. And, but, you know, from, from our position, there was a lot that was done upon the reliance, upon the plan being endorsed, being dated prior to town meeting vote, and having significance after town meeting. And that's, and that's why we're here. Because, because our belief is that when you take all the facts and you take a look at the situation that, that she's in, and the situation of these lots, that it does meet the requirements for variance. Because everybody treated it, from the town side, treated it as buildable lots. Even today, they're being taxed as separate buildable lots. Now, we can have a difference of opinion as to the legal significance of, of different things happening, but the bottom line is that, you know, since, you know, since 87, just since 87, the town has looked at this as separate buildable lots, allowed the conveyance of lots off of the plan. And my clients always believed that they did have separate buildable lots. And that's, and I can understand we have a difference of opinion on this, but that's, that's our position.
I, I understand your position. I, I'm bothered that it took us three meetings to get to all of this.
But, but part of it was the questions you asked, make, put us back further into going into, going into the, into the archives. And we're talking about something that happened in 87. So, it did, it did take a little while to, to pull it out.
So, I, I want to, I'm trying to understand why this is supposed to be a ruling instead of a variance request. So, if I imagine an, an alternate timeline, a different universe, where these lots were proposed and were accepted and then were built upon, okay? Thirty-five years ago. And then it was decided, okay, we're going to tear down those houses and build new houses because those houses don't fit what we want anymore, right? You would still be non-conforming and you would be in building a new house asking for variances on those houses, on the buildable lot area, not on a ruling.
We ask for a finding because our belief was, our belief is that they were grandfathered. And we're looking for a finding.
But, but my point is that it would be grandfathered if there was a structure there, right? That, that, it, you, the lots were designated, but like, and the lot is grandfathered in perhaps, if, if we want to be generous here. But if you had built on that lot and then the house was torn down and you wanted to build another house, that house would still not, would still need a variance.
I think that would be a different situation. Though, it would have been nice if they'd built on the house and sold, and sold the lots before we came in here, but that's not the case. So, we, we looked for it both ways. We looked for a variance or an alternative of finding that, that has applied to this lot, that these lots have grandfathered protection. Now, you can not grant a finding. You can, you know, grant a finding, not grant a variance, or grant a variance, not grant a finding, or not grant anything. But we, we came in here looking for it both ways because we felt it could be looked at both ways. And I'd rather ask for additional relief than, you know, than ask for a relief and someone says, "You should have asked for a finding." Or come in for a finding and someone said, "You should ask for a variance." So, ultimately, we're here and it seemed to make sense to go in both directions.
And I, and I understand from your perspective of wanting to cover all the bases, but I think from my perspective, what that means is that I have a hard time considering that for a finding. Right. I, I, I think if I, of, at least my own vision of the role, of my role in this board is that I have a lot more leeway with a variance than I do with a finding.
And we ask for both. And, you know, and we've had other cases before this board where we dealt with findings and variances and decisions were made to go with a variance, and then the findings were withdrawn.
And, and so then the, the second piece of this is that we've spent a lot of time, including today, on the, the lot size portion of this. But there, of course, is the, the, the buildable area with respect to, right? And, and we've had this discussion before too. And so, I don't want to rehash everything that we've done before because that'll take another hour. But that similarly, the, I similarly have difficulty with a finding there because you're asking us to change the way that we have done environmental law in this town for the past three decades. And so, again, you know, a variance is a possibility here, but you are asking us for two very large variances now, right? That, and, and they somewhat compound each other. And so, it is, you know, I, 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 I know that it is a frustrating experience to keep coming in front of us, but you're asking for basically two sets of very large variances three times. And that is a lot to ask of us.
I understand that. In terms of the lot area, we had the whole discussion a while back on another petition as to the meaning of "and" and the meaning of "or."
Yep.
And, and I, and that may be something that, the way we looked at it is, a finding would be appropriate if this board, you know, reached a conclusion that "and" is different from "or." And I don't want to spend time going through that again because I think everybody on the board was, was here for that discussion. But at the same time, if a variance is something this board would entertain and is not interested in entertaining a finding, I understand that. But we brought both before the board in case there was a, there was a reason why the board wanted to treat this as a finding as opposed to a variance.
Sure, Ron, come on in.
Thank you. Question for Attorney Johnson. You keep referring to the lots as being taxed as buildable lots as opposed to being taxed as lots. And we've had lots before which were taxed, but they were not buildable. So, how come you keep referring to these as buildable lots?
Give me one second. We have submitted the evaluation of the lots per year. And I have one valuation that we, that we had submitted for Lot 14. It looks like a land valuation of $331,000. It's the amount of the assessment. Lot 15, we have one statement here for $335,900. So, it's the amount of the valuation for tax purposes that we base a belief that these were being taxed as buildable lots. Because you wouldn't tax on a buildable lot at that amount.
Okay, that, that, I don't know. We, I know we've listed other lots that due to a tax, but then were not buildable and that's working with important circumstances. Third question. Lot 8, 9, 11, and 12 were all issued building permits after the rezoning was done. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And were any variances or findings needed to come before any town body to allow that to happen?
Not, not that I'm aware of.
And one, again, I apologize if this is, if I didn't take this note well enough, but in a reference in your package, by the way, I want to thank you for putting together a very nice package. You referenced natural law, 48, 66, building law in effect at the time for three years. What happens after three years?
The, the question is, as these lots maintain separate ownership, our belief is that after three years, they still have protection.
Okay, so they have, that makes those four years, five years, what is it?
That, that's our, that's our position on this. And it's based upon the way building permits have been issued and certainly the way the, the lots continue to be taxed.
And you have been with Exhibit 13.
I'm sorry, what, what number?
Exhibit 13.
Thirteen. Yep.
Which lot was that? I mean, Mookie is saying that it was, again, the built at some point was sold then, I'm trying to figure out, 2001?
No.
What, what lot is that?
Hold on. That is, I believe, based upon the chart, that would be Lot 10. That, that's on the, the timeline.
Okay. All right, thank you.
How, how long would you think to be grandfathered, a lot, grandfathered? Like, how long would that be?
Well, there's a question as to, and it may be an unanswered question to some extent as to how long you have grandfathered protection. But there, there are other factors that go into whether or not, you know, what the legal status of the lot is. You know, one of them being, again, you know, the question of uniformity and the question of how the town has treated it. So, I mean, if, if at some point in time, the town decided to combine all these lots or, or started, started assessing these lots as, you know, as being worth $20,000, I mean, that, that'd be different than continuing to assess these lots as if they're worth over, over $200,000 each. I mean, it is a, you know, is, and, and there's a fairness argument as well. I mean, because the, I have a client that, you know, clients who have paid a lot of money believing that these lots still were grandfathered, that these lots still had protection as individual lots, they were in separate ownership. And these, these were lots that were put aside for, you know, future financial, you know, well-being of, of, of the people who own these lots. And, you know, they believe that they were putting it aside, that they did it right. Attorney Oakley is here to explain, you know, how it was done if there's questions as to, you know, how these lots were set up and the various trusts for the various lots and what the history was. But, you know, they, they believed in good faith that they had lots that could be, that could be built or could be sold at some point in the future and built to get back an investment. I mean, clearly, if they didn't believe that, they wouldn't have kept paying all this money in taxes. I mean, it's about $210,000 between, between the three lots. It's over $70,000 a lot. It's a lot of money.
I think the grandfathered five years.
So, it-
Five years.
So, that's, I mean, that, that's, you know, that's my, that's my client's, you know, position and, and that's what their understanding was. Exactly how long, under these circumstances, when the plan was reported and the like, you know, they, they have, they, they have your total protection, you know, it, it is, is another question. And, you know, but they, even apart from that, when you look at a, you know, a fairness argument and you look at a hardship argument, they did what they thought they needed to be done and what they were told needed to be done at the time of the zoning change. They got a plan in right before town meeting. It was eventually approved for not, not acting. It went through Land Court. It got reported. The assessor used that and did the, and did separate lots. And they paid the taxes, you know, based upon, and I've given you all, all the valuations, you know, on the lots back as far as we could get it out of the assessor's office. But you're talking about, you know, these lots continue to be taxed, you know, over $300,000. I mean, this is a, it's not, not a non-buildable lot in terms of how the town has looked at these lots, you know, and how the assessor's office has looked at it and how my clients have looked at it paying the taxes for all these years. We can now have music.
Our taxes-
Play some music?
Uh, are taxes paid on Lot 16? Is that still owned by a family trust? Yeah. Do we know what the ta, taxes are on that compared to the other three that we're looking at today? That's not ever going to be a buildable lot though. Right, that's what I'm asking. So, it's going to be massively different even if the other lots weren't buildable, weren't being taxed as buildable. It would be a huge difference. Right.
That's sort of the Ron's question, what makes it, calls it, defines it as a buildable lot.
The problem is, is we've had multiple applications that have come in on blanket lots that have been taxed as buildable lots. And that's not, that's not your golden ticket to get variances. We, we haven't given variances to other applicants because it was a buildable lot.
I have a notation on Lot C. On that lot, I believe $544.23. I'm not sure if that's for a year or if that's over what time period, I can certainly, somewhere I have that information, but clearly a lot, a lot different than, than the other numbers. I don't know whether or not you've had a situation where, where people have come in and, you know, recognized the zoning change, did what they had to do to protect their investment, thought they did it, and, and I believe that they did, and then pay taxes based upon these lots being assessed at buildable.
I'm saying we've had applicants come in who have, 25 years ago, bought in a piece of land, not split up their own land because, let, let's think about this. This situation was created by, and I understand it's, it's owned by multiple different trusts and so on and so forth. This situation was created. It, it was not something that somebody bought into. And what I'm, the point I'm getting at is, we've had applicants come in who, 25 years ago, bought a piece of land that was buildable 25 years ago. And now they're wanting to build, and guess what? They don't have the side setbacks, they don't have the front setbacks, they don't have the rear setbacks. They have nothing, but they've been paying for a buildable lot. We've, we've still denied.
And hopefully, you would have given them a variance because-
But that doesn't, that's not your golden ticket is my point. It's unfortunate and it's, it's, it's a situation that I, I feel for the people who are in them, but that's not going to get-
And if I could just suggest that, that's why the variance standard is, yep, is financial or otherwise. It is to pick up a situation where you have people who, residents of, of North Andover and long-term residents of North Andover, that did what they believed needed to be done. They believed that they had, that every indication from the town was that they had done what needed to be done. And now when it comes time to try to sell these lots, which they put aside for retirement, they, they're finding that they can't. And that's why, that's why they come in here. And if these lots had been assessed, you know, at $10,000 a lot or something, it would be different.
I'm not sure it would be. I think there would still be the argument of, we thought we had lots and we could build them.
Well, I think that, I think the argument would be cut back, would be undercut by the idea that, did you think a valuation of $10,000 would be a buildable lot? And I think, I, I think here, the amount that these lots were assessed at, and you have all that information, and the amount of taxes that were paid is consistent with someone believing that they had done it properly and they would be able to sell the lots. Now, that's, you know, that in a, you know, that in a long summary is, is what our position is. And, and I understand that, yes, Chair, you don't agree with our position. But we're, we're here today because these, the, the family believed, you know, long-term, longtime family believed that they had properly set aside these lots and did it properly. And it turns out that there's a question, and we're here seeking, seeking relief.
And that's...
And that's...
It's just like somebody who bought a house and thought they were going to be able to put an addition on it when they bought it in nineteen eighty, and then conservation has snuck up on their land, and thirty years later, they can't build an addition.
I, I, I think it's a little bit different. And, you know, I mean, you, I'm not going to, I can tell I'm not going to change your mind, um, and...
Well, and this is, this is where my standpoint is as of right now. I have reached out to Town Council regarding the, the stamp from the town clerk, because there, there is question to why it is fourteen days and not twenty-one. From what I've been told, from the gospel of North Andover, it's always been twenty-one days. So that's...
I can, I cannot help you with that answer.
And that's, that's fine, I'm not looking, that's why, I'm telling you, I have reached out to Town Council regarding that issue. I have also reached out in the sense of, I will tell you, at this point, even looking at this, I don't see how a town clerk stamp can completely essentially override three separate zoning bylaws that were in place at this time. So that is something else that I have had Town Council look into, and she hasn't gotten back to me. So I, I can tell you, it's probably pretty obvious where I stand on this issue as of right now. So whether you'd want me to wait to get further information is up to you, and I'm...
Well, if, if...
I'm giving, I'm giving you this before I open it up for public comment or other comments from the board.
If the board senses that you want to wait to hear back from Town Council.
It's not me. It's, I'm bothered by how all of this was presented, and I, I...
And all I can, all I can do is tell you that as questions came up, we gave you the documentation that, that you were looking for, and I, I don't think factually...
But I'm not going to know to ask about, and it matters to me. When I have a, when an applicant and somebody comes in with such vast knowledge of, of a history of land, I'm bothered by the fact that I'm not told, hey, we went to planning, and this is what happened at planning. And from planning is how we got here.
What, what I've, what I've told you is what is the record from Land Court and what was certified by the town clerk. Now, now, we, we know how we got here, okay? Now, whether or not, whether or not legally, the effect of how we got here is the way it should have gotten here or not, but I, I don't think there's any question, and the documentation we submitted is consistent with that. I don't think there's any question as to when the plan was submitted, that it was signed by the town clerk, whether or not the town clerk was right or wrong, that's something that happened a long time ago.
Attorney Johnson, I'm, I'm not going to put your client in the situation of, of actually having to address the Planning Board application and hearing. But I understand you may not know everything, and I appreciate that. I appreciate that as a lawyer, before you come into a meeting, you're going to look at this and go, there's things missing on here. Why are they missing?
The, that was submitted to show you the date that it was submitted.
But this doesn't show me the date it was submitted. This shows me the date it was, it was made.
And it was made...
This doesn't show me the date it was submitted to planning. The application to planning, which I had to dig, is what shows me the application.
We, we indicated that it was submitted on May first. We may not have had the application...
No, 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 no. I have watched our very first meeting more times than I would like to admit. And the topic of planning and it being approved by planning was not something, I will give you this, was not something you ever said.
What our position was, that it was submitted to the town prior, let me just finish, prior to the town meeting vote.
Attorney Johnson, I'm going to ask you to go back and look at the video.
I'll go back and, I'll go back and watch it. So, um, right now, um, I'm happy to answer any other questions from anybody else on the board.
I will let the board, if the board would like to ask further questions, they can, and then I have some public comments I have to re, I have been requested to read into the record. Are there any further questions from the board?
This is coming from a totally different perspective here, but I'm looking back at a letter that we got, and this goes back to the first meeting. It's from Amy Maxner, Conservation Administrator. So my question is, uh, you may, we, is what Andover, when I, I'm going to read it in a moment, but my question is, did the work at Andover Consultants in Norris Environmental do, did it address it, is my question? Okay, and so it, um, it says that development of these lots would have to undergo natural heritage and endangered species review and conditions restrictions on construction, land disturbance would likely be required, okay, blah, blah, blah. Okay, so my question, you know, I, you know what the question is.
What was the date of, of her letter?
Uh, August fifteenth. The way, this goes back to our first meeting.
We know that whatever approvals, I, these letters did not specifically address that, but whatever approvals we need past zoning, we certainly would have to get.
He's saying that if we grant him his variance, then he'll go to conservation, and conservation will deal with any issue on the lot. When we had asked for the issues, we were looking for the runoff, we were looking for post-construction runoff, because the concern of the neighborhood is that you build three houses and everybody floods. But actual conservation, wetlands, those kind of things, conservation will have to deal with because they're so close. Or in.
And we know, we know we'd have to go there.
I'm sorry?
We know we would have to go there.
Any other questions from the board?
If this doesn't work out for you, um, do you have any backup plan? Can you combine lots, do anything like that?
We, um...
Or if you get, if the variance is shot down, you're locked out for some period of time?
Um, well, I guess there are two answers to that question. If the variance is denied, then obviously, we have a decision to make, whether or not to appeal that, whether or not to wait two years, whether or not to look at combining lots. If combining lots is something that, you know, the board would, somebody on the board would suggest we take a look at, we, we can take a look at that to see what relief would be needed, if certain lots, certain land was combined. Obviously, there's a lot of, you know, there's a fair amount of money that's been paid.
Wouldn't that be the, the Planning Board, though, if you had a, if you were changing lot lines?
If, um, we'd have to, we'd have to go to planning as well if we're combining or doing a four-man lot to combine them.
They, they would still need a variance on contiguous buildable area, quite a substantial one.
And again, it's the definition, too, as, as to how we're dealing with, with that definition, but, um, you know, that, that's something we've, you know, we've looked at, but we'd need, spent, have to spend a fair amount of time just trying to see if it's possible ultimately to end up with two lots as opposed to three.
I guess part of the question was, though, if, if, if a variance got denied, would you have to wait the two years to do that, or is that, is that something different, not the same application?
It, it's something that if a variance was denied, the question becomes whether or not we're coming back with something substantially different. And it's a process that, for repetitive petitions, that we'd have to go through or be frozen out for two years. So I, I guess, yeah, I guess I'd ask the question back, is, is relief, if we somehow came up with a configuration of two lots that needed zoning relief, something that this board would entertain or encourage us to look at?
I don't know what is substantially, I mean, in some ways, I sit here and say, if you go from three lots to two lots, I think that's a substantial jump. But I don't know if you're coming back for, I mean, I suppose you wouldn't be coming back for acreage. So you'd be coming back for CBA.
Even if you went from three lots to two lots, it still would not meet the acreage. It would still need a variance on the acreage.
So you're coming back for acreage, you're coming back for CBA.
You could, you could have one that was, that met the acreage, and the other one that would be still greater than it is, but...
Or they could take the, they could take the pond and divide it into two.
I, I would point out that even if you combined lots thirteen and fourteen, you would meet the, uh, the overall acreage, you would not come close to contiguous buildable area.
Under which interpretation?
Uh, under the one as it currently stands. Right, the, the, the current status quo. It would not, you know, your, your, your request for a, for a finding, put aside for the moment, assuming purely a variance perspective. It would be well short still, so it would be a substantial variance still on that lot.
So I don't know if it would be, if you're coming back for the exact same three things, and it's just two lots versus three. I don't, I truly don't know if that's substantially different enough. I, I know we had one point where a building changed its shape, and the zoning board said they thought it was substantially different, but other boards did not, so I, I don't know on that aspect.
No, no, I wouldn't expect you to. But if, if that's something the board would entertain, we certainly can look at that and come back next month, with, just as, as a, to show what would happen if we tried to get two lots.
Well, I mean, I, I haven't decided for myself which way I feel about this as is.
Right, I understand.
But obviously, if you made it less so, that'd be more likely for me. But I'm not saying one way or another, I'm just kidding. Anyway, it might still be okay by me.
Anything else from the board currently?
Is the engineer that drew up the water mitigation measures here?
He is not here. I found out this morning that he, at the last minute, he couldn't make it, but he said he'd be available next month.
Okay, uh, do you happen to know, um, in terms of like the standards, looks, seems like he drew it up according to the standards for like stormwater mitigation, um, uh, stormwater standards, Massachusetts stormwater standards. Do you know if those are based on like record rain years like this one, or...
I've learned never to answer a question directly to an engineer.
Sure, yeah, so not something you guys went over before this.
So I, I don't know the answer to that, and I don't want to take a guess.
Okay.
But, um, but he would be available.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's kind of one of my biggest sticking points on this, is that there are a lot of abutters who have concerns about flooding, you know, that's not, and that same condition may not have been there in the eighties. Like, you know, we've talked about a lot on this board that like wetlands and water flow does change over time. You know, so that's going to be a, a concern to address for sure, for me at least.
Okay, I'm going to read, um...
I have an interesting one, one question. Any other concerns that any other board members have that, if we are going to come back, that we should address or questions?
We might get some.
You might keep going.
As people come through. Don't worry, I'll make sure to ask again before we... Okay, all of these are from a Mr. Ron Ford. He had requested that they all be read tonight at the meeting. They have either been emailed to...
We've received them.
What's that?
We've received them.
Okay. He wanted them read, right? Okay, he, he wanted them read, so just bear with me. August eighth, twenty twenty-three. Hi, Paul, I understand there's a town hall meeting tonight at seven-thirty on this development. I'm unable to be there in person. I object to any development in the area and surrounding this parcel due to disturbance of wetlands and runoff to my property. This will degrade the neighborhood and the natural beauty being why we moved to North Andover. Please submit this to the appeals board for consideration and next steps. The neighbors in the area also objecting to this also have a right of first refusal with regards to sale of this property. Sorry, and that was labeled zero Winter Street land development. It's labeled zero Winter Street land development from August tenth, twenty twenty-three. Based on Winter Street residents' August eighth meeting feedback, which did bring to surface inconsistencies with regard to property disturbance, pond water runoff into and out below and above ground, tree removal and disturbance to soil runoff, wind issues, more aggressive by removing our natural barriers, foundation-related cracks and seepage. Studies need to be done by Odell F. Cashman Trust to prevent future neighbor claims. With the weather patterns we have been exposed to over the recent years, this has proven, proved any disturbance to our land will only enhance the weather to be more destructive. Electrical and cable downtime will also be a major factor. The consensus is for Ellen Cashman to deed the acreage to the town of North Andover as conservation, with an agreement from North Andover to rebate her upfront the reasonable period of time real estate taxes paid on the property for pristinely maintaining the area that protects Winter Street from our change in climate. The family has benefited from many land transactions on Dale Street, and this land donation will keep her longtime family legacy alive forever. This is Ron Ford, four-twenty-eight Winter Street, resident since two thousand and one. This is just a handwritten petition to block any land development at Zero Winter Street. We object also to any or all zoning changes, and we stand together on the environmental issues we will face as a result of this development, stop this land development. And it is signed by Ron Ford, um, and a gem, I can't read his last name, at four-thirty-nine Winter Street. Zero Winter Street land development, August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Dear zoning, building inspector, and wetlands commission, a current assessment of this property shows various destabilizing factors to support and stop any land development at this location. Winter Street residents object and claim, i.e., erosion and runoff, wildlife disturbance, negative effects of climate change, which can currently be seen on Winter Street. We currently request additional inspections of this property. Pond, spring receive, and runoff, wetlands behind garage-dash-barn, landscaping debris by cellar that is being dumped into wetlands, current development activity within wetlands boundaries next to cellar. Another handwritten petition. To block any land development at Zero Winter Street, we object also to any and all zoning changes, and we stand together on the environmental issues we will face as a result of this development, stop this land development. Again, it's signed by Ron and Sarah and Mitchell at four-twenty-seven Winter Street. Zero Winter Street land development from August twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. Please attach this additional petition to my previous emails and forward to the board members prior to the next meeting. During the summer of twenty twenty-three, we will have been experiencing many significant weather events that are disturbing our underground and above-ground water tables. Most recently was Friday, eight eighteen, which proved once again flash floods are becoming more normal and are indicative, contrary to what the landowner stated in the last meeting, of what we are dealing with compared to historically when the weather was more stable. The above-subject land and lower Winter Street was mainly underwater, eight eighteen, and previously, as pictures will show, this is a major concern to the residents of Winter Street due to the additional runoff concerns currently. And any development to this property and removing vegetation will create additional erosion issues. Zero Winter Street, August twenty-third, twenty twenty, okay. As much as Mr. Ford would like the rest of these, I'm, they are part of the record.
There may be certain letters that were submitted in support of the petition as well?
Well, I, I will say this, Mr. Ford had, had sent numerous ones and had requested, but I'm...
In the interest of time.
In the interest of time, I've read numerous chunks. I do understand that there are some in support. I wasn't trying to read just ones that were in opposition to, I...
I'm not saying you are, just with this record, if you remember, if I understand what you're supporting.
I know that there are, don't worry.
And I know you have them.
Anyone for public comment on Winter Street Lot thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen?
Sure, I'd like to say a few things.
One second, where do I have him sit for a mic? Sorry about this, we didn't...
We're, we're, we're happy to share.
Thank you, we're kind of winging this a little bit.
Hi, uh, my name is Michael Smolak, not attorney John Smolak. We're very different people. But, um, I can appreciate all the work that all of you have put into this, and a lot of the thought that you've all put into it, and I'm very impressed. My historical thought, well, going way back to when this was actually done, when they had that zoning change, I was in the middle of this because I talked to the Planning Board about it, negotiated with them, thought that they would allow sewerage on one acre lots, and then we went to town meeting, and they kind of deep-sixed it right in front of me. So I was, I was very embarrassed, um, with that. With that being said, uh, before this all came down, we went to, um, the building inspector, other people in town, and said, okay, how do we preserve our lot? Because I had basically, I don't know how many acres, fifty acres, that all of a sudden, that I was going to see, the value of it slashed in half. And, and, and anybody here who had that kind of financial loss certainly would be more than a little bit alarmed. That's why we did the, the, uh, the meeting House Commons, because that was the only way to settle my mother's estate while she was alive. So what we did is we re, we relied on what we were told. And, you know, I don't know all the nuances, and I don't pretend to, and frankly, I don't even want to know all the nuances. It's too much for my mind to absorb at this point in time or this hour. But all I do know is that... But all I do know is that I've watched these people with this piece of property try and create some sort of legacy for their, for their children. They've suffered, which is not, which is not exactly germane, but they've suffered tremendous loss with, you know, I think by the time this, this all gets done, there aren't gonna be any of the kids left. We started with five, now they're down to two. And so my heart goes out to them. My, my understanding of the zoning board of appeals is that over time, things do change. I know with my property, with the farm, things have changed, and I have not been aware of changes of zoning, or bylaws, or wetlands. And I thank, thank God I'm a farmer, because at least I've got some protection with this stuff. But a lot of people don't have that. And I feel that that is your responsibility, your charge, your duty, to adjudicate these things, and I think to the best of your ability. And I, I am very impressed with your research with all this stuff, and I can't imagine how much time you put into this. But, but just going forward, I just hope you give them due consideration from, from this, from this emotional perspective. And as far as the, the, the water and the land and their neighbors, you know, I'm a farmer, and I know that land. That water flows downhill, and it flows away from Winter Street. It flows towards the brook, towards the mosquito brook, and out to, out to the Upstate River. So, you know, maybe, maybe, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't come in here realizing that Ellen Cashman was responsible for climate change. But, but I'm gonna be a little more careful with her from now on. But just give, just give it due consideration. I really appreciate your time. And, and like the gentleman who got first up and gave a moment of silence, I'd like people to remember what's gone on in the Middle East and Israel and Gaza, because that's been equally horrible and maybe more. Okay, thank you very much for listening to me.
Is there anyone else for Winter Street Lots 13, 14, and 15? Made everybody wait for Merrimack. Okay. So no more public comment. Does the board have anything further? Any questions that have come up in their brain in the last 10 minutes?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay. What would you like to do?
If there's more information you'd like on drainage, I would ask you to continue it, and we'll get the information on drainage. I'm not an engineer, so I can't, I can't answer the questions you had. Kind of wouldn't try.
So, excuse me, but you have the letters that we have coming from the abutters, correct?
That's correct.
There's the questions that need to be answered for us. There's the ones we have then.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I have specific questions about the diagram that we're talking about.
That's correct.
Okay, so then we're going to continue so that those can be addressed next month.
So they can be addressed next month. At this point, I'll be limited to addressing the drainage issue, and I guess the abutter, the abutter letters, to the extent that they reflect on drainage and the like.
I, I don't have any other questions. I think I have the, in other respects, I have the information that I need. I don't want to speak for anybody else, but that's, that's where I am.
I'm sure I will hear back from town council between now and.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I'm happy to talk to town council as well. I mean, just so you're clear that we're not, we're not taking the position that these lots have continuous zoning protection, but we believe that under the facts of this case, it was a very, it was very understandable for my client to believe that she had protection, especially in payment of the various tax bills, the assessment on these lots moving forward, and the fact that conveyances and permits were issued. So, just so we're clear, I don't want you to think that I'm coming in here saying something that, that isn't correct, but there's been a lot of information that we've tried to provide to the board, and it's not, not the simplest set of facts, but I think from our standpoint, it goes back to, we do believe we submitted and made one, gave us protection, and the certification and eventual signing and recording of the plan was indicative of a plan that had zoning protection. And I'm most, more than happy to talk to the town council if she has questions on it.
Okay. Okay, so you want to continue until November?
November sounds like a nice month. Unless town, is town council going to need more time?
Town council should not need more time. I don't, I don't picture her needing more time. I spoke to her about a week ago, so that should give her about five weeks.
I move that we continue to November 14.
Actually, one quick question. The, the question that was submitted to town council was, just to understand.
Well, I, I was asking her to look into a few things. One, the issue of the town clerk stamp being of 14 days versus 21.
Okay.
What actual significance that holds on the zoning board in terms of, at that time, regardless of our differences, in October of 1987, the zoning changes had already taken place. So what significance the town clerk's signature has on that? I, I can ask her about, I'm, about whether the May 1 submission date to planning is basically what, what got you your cover versus a planning board approval, or, or the town clerk's signature. That was basically what I was asking her for.
Okay, that's fine, because I can also look at those issues again. So I just.
Okay, now can I have a motion?
All right, I move that we continue this meeting until November 14th.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think you may need to do a roll call. I'm sorry, because you have somebody.
Oh, that's right. Sorry, thank you. Ron?
I vote aye.
Okay, Stephen?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye. Okay, there we go.
Okay, thank you.
I'm gonna give this back to you.
Is there anything else you want me to blow up?
Okay. Need a drink. Okay, so now we have Merrimack College. Okay. So coming up is going to be the 315 Turnpike Street. Basically both of them. It's for the two buildings, so you guys know who you are. Okay, so you have to be.
The variance in the finding. I'll just read all four sides.
Okay, boy.
The backside of this. One side is variance, one side is finding.
Oh, because it's for each building? Okay.
Yeah.
So do, sorry, guys, hold on one second. Is there anything that distinguishes?
No, not that I can see.
There's nothing that distinguishes on the legal notice, right? No, it's because there's two separate buildings. You know what I'm asking, right? But it's for two separate.
The finding is for both buildings, and then there's one variance for building one, one variance for building two.
Okay, got it. You got that now? It's late. My coffee is worn off.
There's three elements to read.
All right, you got that? Front, back?
All right. But the findings are identical, right?
The, the finding is one finding.
It's one finding, and it's, but the variances are.
And then two, two variances.
Okay, I got you. Got to split them both up. Okay, yeah. All right, I'll start with the finding. Notices hereby given that the, notices hereby given that the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the North Andover Senior Center at 481 Sutton Street, North Andover, Mass. on Tuesday, October 10th, 2023, at 7:30 PM to all parties interested in the petition of Merrimack College owner and Gray Star Development East LLC developer for property at 315 Turnpike Street, MAP 25, Parcel 13, North Andover, Mass. 01845, in the R3 zoning district. The applicants are requesting a finding pursuant to the town of North Andover zoning bylaws, Section 195-10.8B, Building Inspector Appeal, in the R3 zoning district, for the purpose of overturning the building commissioner's denial dated August 30th, 2023. Specifically, applicants seek a finding from town of North Andover zoning bylaws from the requirements of Section 195-7.4, building height, attachment 3, Table 2, summary of dimensional requirements for the purpose of allowing the construction of two buildings to be used as academic space and residential dormitories on an undeveloped portion of the property. Application and supporting materials are available for review at the office of the zoning department located at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Mass. on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from the hours of 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Tuesday from the hours of 8:00 AM to 5:30 PM, and Friday from the hours of 8:00 AM to 11:30 AM. By order of the Board of Appeals, Alexandria A. Jacobs, Esq., Chair. Okay, going into the, just want to get this right, going into the first variance. And notices hereby given that the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the North Andover Senior Center at 481 Sutton Street, North Andover, Mass. on Tuesday, October 10th, 2023, at 7:30 PM to all parties interested in the petition of Merrimack College owner and Gray Star Development East LLC developer for property at 315 Turnpike Street, MAP 25, Parcel 13, North Andover, Mass. 01845, in the R3 zoning district. The applicants are requesting a variance pursuant to town of North Andover zoning bylaws, Section 195-7.4, building height, attachment 3, Table 2, summary of dimensional requirements for building height in the R3 zoning district for the purpose of allowing the construction of two buildings to be used as academic space and residential dormitories on an undeveloped portion of the property. Specifically, applicants have requested a building height for building number one needing a relief variance of 12.1 feet in height. Building height proposed is 47.1. Building height required per Table 2 is 35 feet. The applicants are requesting a variance pursuant to town of North Andover zoning bylaws, Section 195-7.4, building height, attachment 3, Table 2, summary of dimensional requirements for building height in the R3 zoning district for the purpose of allowing the construction of two buildings to be used as academic space and residential dormitories on an undeveloped portion of the property. Specifically, applicants have requested a building height for building number two needing a relief variance of 11.9 feet in height. Building height proposed is 46.9 feet. Building height required per Table 2 is 35 feet. Application and supporting materials are available for review at the office of the zoning department located at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Mass. on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from the hours of 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Tuesday from the hours of 8:00 AM to 5:30 PM, and Friday from the hours of 8:00 AM to 11:30 AM. By order of the Board of Appeals, Alexandria A. Jacobs, Esq., Chair.
Before you guys present, good evening. I just want to let you know, we are sorry. We have to be, end our meeting around quarter up in order for me to get everybody out of here who has to be out of here by 10:00.
No worries.
So you are obviously going to be with us next month. So I guess I would say present, and if you can find kind of like a good stopping spot, we can end it there for the night. All right, so who are you guys? What do you got?
Okay. My name is Jeff Doggett. I'm the Executive Vice President, Chief Financial Officer at Merrimack College. I'm also a resident, 84 Johnson Street. I appreciate the opportunity to be before you. Just very briefly, before we go through as many slides as we can, and if there's time to answer any questions, we certainly will try to do so, and then obviously, if we're here, we'll be here at the next meeting as well. I just would like to note, just very quickly, this is an unusual situation for the college. We had originally considered building on this corner several years ago. We decided to abandon that to be part of the Royal Crest project, and I only mention that because it was during that very public process that we repeatedly said that if one project were not to happen at Royal Crest, then we would go back to the corner. And I think we're all, we don't need to go through the history of how that, that the Royal Crest project ended at town meeting. I just note that because one of the things that continually came up over and over and over again was, don't build at Royal Crest, build on your property. And we repeatedly went back and said, this is what we would end up doing, is going back to the corner. And so in some respects, this might be the, yeah, this might be the, this, this, this might be the, the longest pre-work that's ever been done on a project on a college campus. But I just wanted to have that history because it's important for, for us to note. This is not the size of the buildings that we were considering at Royal Crest. It's a portion of that size, but the, the, the height is very important to us, or else this is a project that we can't get students out of Royal Crest for. So with that, I'm gonna turn this over to, to Mark, who we've heard a lot from tonight, but he's gonna go through a couple of slides really quickly, because this is a Dover project, which is slightly different. And this is the first time that, in my 12 years of being at Merrimack, I've been before this board, so I just wanted to make sure that we at least got out of an open conversation about what a Dover project is or is not. And if that's as far as we go, then that's a good, good stopping point. Otherwise, to my right is Tom from Cube 3, and he can begin to walk through the project itself. And we'll stop whenever it is the chair wishes us to.
Quarter up.
We're gonna, we're gonna get further than what a Dover is.
Okay, we'll go.
Just had a, again, Mark Johnson, Johnson and Bernstein, representing the applicant. Has this board dealt with Dover before? Just for your background.
I don't believe any, no, no one.
Not any current members.
Okay. Let me just briefly go over what Dover is. Dover is a, Master General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 3, provides certain protection for different types of uses. And that, that section, if we can hit the slides.
Jen, you're up.
For a use that's considered to be a Dover use, which is an education use, and the building inspector has made that determination, and we submitted a copy of that determination to you, the statute provides that no zoning ordinance or bylaw shall prohibit, regulate, or restrict the use of land or structures for educational purposes by a nonprofit educational corporation, provided the land or structures may be subject to reasonable regulations concerning bulk and height. We're before this board because our project meets all of the other dimensional requirements of the zoning bylaw, other than height. And that's what brings us before you. The courts have traditionally treated exemptions under the Dover amendment as distinct from the typical variance procedure, because the standard of review was focused on reasonableness, which is why we filed an application of a finding as well, because what would be appropriate would be a finding that our use at this height is reasonable. The, next slide, please. Therefore, the standard of review for Dover use is not hardship, which typically you would have with a variance, but one of reasonableness. And the, and the key inquiry is whether the height restriction is a reasonable education, a regional regulation for educational use. It depends on whether it serves a legitimate missile purpose, whether compliance would diminish or detract from the usefulness of, of the project. And, and I've provided these slides to you as well. It's, it's our belief that the proposed building heights are reasonable. The height limitation in the R3 district is 35 feet. Merrimack College's campus in this area is an R3 zoning district. We believe the character of the surrounding neighborhoods is primarily commercial and features large commercial buildings located off 114 on either side of campus. Abutting parcels are comprised of different zoning districts and built, different building height limitations. The general business is 45 feet, the business four is 60 feet, and the industrial one is 55 feet. And the college campus itself features many large three and four-story buildings that range in height from 41 to 50 feet, with an average height of approximately 47 feet. And we believe that the building fits in with the campus, and we're happy to take you through, and Tom can take you through, what the project is, and what it looks like, and the height.
Hi, good evening. Tom Lassie, architect at Cube 3. We're just across the river in Lawrence, so we're, we're kind of local to, local-ish to here. So I just want to go quickly through, I think everyone's probably familiar with the site. Everyone drives by it probably fairly often. Here, we have 114 on the north side, or the top of the page, with Andover Street on the left side. So these are two buildings proposed along the corner. We're framing the church views from the corner of 114 and Andover, and you can see that the, the pathway between the two buildings is similar to the pathway that's existing. Next slide, please. And please interrupt if you have any questions. This slide, we're, we're just showing the kind of, the setbacks here. We're complying. We're compliant with the 30-foot front and side and rear setbacks. Next slide, please. Again, this chart is just, is illustrating the, the compliance of, of all the setbacks and where we're requesting relief on the building height.
If there's any question on, on how the building was measured, we have a slide on that.
It's next.
I, I do have one quick question on the, on the setbacks, the side setbacks. There's going to be a renovation of that intersection coming up.
Yes.
Will that involve any additional cuts into that property line?
No. I think the, the property line isn't moving.
Yeah, I'm sorry. The property line doesn't, doesn't move, and actually, there'll be more green space added, so it'd actually be further back.
Okay.
But the, but from the property line, nothing changes.
Wait, there's going to be more green space added into 114?
Yeah. 114 is getting narrower.
I didn't see that in any of this. Is any of that in here that I missed in terms of what the... Because it's, what is it? It's a 114 Mass DOT...
Yeah.
...project. Is any of that in here?
No. I, I think we, we only have what we received the latest from them, and, but it does, it does extend, and we're happy to bring that to the next meeting, what we've been given.
If you could bring that so that I can...
Yeah. Yeah.
So, this slide is calculating average building height. This slide is deceptively sloped from left, or sorry, right to left, towards the corner. So, these buildings on this site, we are splitting about halfway in the middle to get egresses and accessible egresses and accessible entrances to the buildings. The orange here that we see, it's at elevation 228, then the blue is dropping down to 224, and you can see that both buildings are similar or at the same elevation so that the entrances are at the same elevation across from each other, and then green being down at 220. And then the site slopes slightly further from there. Average grade is a calculation based on several points that are taken along the building edge, so, and that's how we've gotten to the average grade of, I think it's 225. I can't remember, but... And then building height is taken from average grade to the average roof surface here in Massachusetts. Next slide, please. Again, illustrating Mark's previous note about the zoning districts and adjacencies. You can see directly across the street, we have 60 feet, and then across the street from there, 45 feet, and, and with Merrimack being 35.
Could the gentleman speak more directly? It was Mike.
This is the existing building on campus, and I'm not going to go through every single one, but as you can see, all the ones highlighted are greater than 35 feet, and most of them are 50 feet. And across the street, we have several that are 50 and 45 feet as well. Elevations, just to show the building heights, this is all taken from average grade like previous. So, this building one, which is the longer one along 114, is a 47.1 feet. This is, the top is the, the street side, and the bottom one is the campus side, and the two middles are the end corners. Similar to building two, they're very similar heights, average grade, and to average roof surface is 46.9 feet. The one on the bottom right-hand corner is the street-facing, and then the other ones are the interior campus side. And then quickly, we'll go through the renderings of just what this project will look like. So, this is creating the gateway to the campus, so we're, we're creating these edges with the buildings to allow a view corridor in between to activate the, the interior side of this courtyard and to, to try to make a space where, like, that people and students can have a sense of place. Just an aerial kind of illustrating the, the massing of the structure. We're chamfering the corners to try to soften the edge to that view corridor to the church, and, and then as you go down 114, we're stepping the building back to kind of eliminate that or reduce the long facade of this building along that 114 corridor. Again, here's the 114 corridor, just showing that how the building's starting to step back. We've sliced away at certain areas to break down that massing again so that this isn't just one really long elevation along the 114. Then finally, a view looking in from the corner at building one and illustrating the active courtyard here at, at the ground floor, and then, um, towards the campus. So, I went through briefly, so if you have any questions...
That is, that is the presentation.
I would say this. I think it looks beautiful.
Okay. When I see this, are any of you familiar with 505 Sutton? Okay. Drive by it. It's right near the airport. Those buildings are higher than what you're looking at, and when you drive by this area, it's literally like a wow. It, it, it feels like the buildings are just overtaken. And this is a huge intersection. I mean, I, I look at this and I go, "Wow, if that was further in..." Because you're, you're literally right at your setbacks, basically. It's very, very over towering. You know, I, you guys had done, I think it was back in 2014, I'm not sure if you were there, it was four buildings, there were dorms, and then there was like a center building.
Mm-hmm.
That design was very nice. That kind of a design, I think, would look nice here. I look at this and I see a brick wall that's just going to kind of be overbearing. And I know you, you do a map of the other heights of buildings, and you have the doctor's office buildings right across the street, and we talk about, you know, elevation and, and grade, and when you look at those buildings from 114, the very big one slopes down, so the height doesn't look as massive. It also is 100 feet back, so even though those, those buildings are larger in height than what you're looking at, they don't look that big because of how far they are, how far back they are in their design. That's kind of really been one of the things... So, yeah, the two that are 203 Turnpike, which is five levels, and 451 Andover Street, which is four levels at 45. So, those, the 45 is essentially what you guys were looking at. It slopes, and the design just... If you drive by that and you drive by 505 Sutton, you can see a difference in, in how they're constructed. So, I will just... That's kind of my first impression of it. I definitely do want to see how 114 is going to change because that, that may be, that may change how I view it because it's not going to be so overbearing.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I, I drive by this a dozen times a day, and I have constantly, since you guys went in front of the planning board, stood up and kind of like stared out the window and looked up and went, "What would that look like?" And as beautiful as it is, it seems like it is very overbearing compared to what we have on 114, because I think, other than looking at Merrimack buildings, which, again, all of those Merrimack buildings are pushed further back. So, you have, I don't know what it is, the Observatory, it's a big, huge building right near the crosswalk.
Yep.
The building's huge, and it's solid brick. It's massive, but it's so far back that the perception of it from when you're driving doesn't seem so massive. And when you drive the rest of 114, we don't have anything of this height. If you're looking for industrial, you're going to find that behind the willows that you can't even see from 114. You're not going to find anything because we purposely haven't done that. I mean, even if you look 114 at Lucent Technologies, which isn't Lucent Tech... Sorry. Oh, it's good. Landing. Made me look old for a minute. Again, huge building, super far back. So, that's, when I'm looking at height and reasonableness and how it affects, that's, that's what I'm looking at. Anyone else?
So, when I, when I think about reasonableness, one of the, the things that comes to my mind is what are, what are the contingencies, right? So, what, i, i, if we were to say, you know, to your point about when Royal Crest was being considered, your point was, "If we don't do that, then there's going to be something that, that goes on the front lawn." If we say no to this height change, what does that practically mean? What are the practical consequences of that? Because to me, that, that has a big impact on the reasonableness standard.
Yeah. So, um, I'll just put aside, you know, all the intricacies of Dover just for a minute, and I'll just treat that simply as, let's say, for whatever reason, this project doesn't happen.
Right. Exactly.
So, um, I can't stress this enough. There's 540 beds in this building. We are doing this with Gray Star because the college does not have the ability to finance a project of this size on its own, and there is no financial viability in a three-story building. So, what would happen is, is the project wouldn't go forward. There'd be 540 students, whether it's the same ones that are there today or not, would be remaining at Royal Crest. The truth of the matter is, Royal Crest, since the town planning vote, has increased rents on the college twice, 18% and 15%. There's no way the institution can continue to subsidize the housing of its students at Royal Crest, and so we'd probably have to get out of that lease. So, the result of that, without appearing as if I've just created the worst, most doomsday approach one could possibly have, what we had said all along back in Royal Crest and, and now during this project is, is that we've been trying to solve multiple problems all at the same time, and the one that we were trying to solve with Royal Crest was to how to find a place where we could put everybody together in a facility. We were more than willing to take what we thought was an economic development opportunity on our campus for our benefit and doing it at Royal Crest because we thought that would help the finances of a project that would have yielded a lot for the town. Again, I'm not relitigating that decision. It was overwhelming enough to know that it's not worthy of the time, and certainly not at this late at night. But all of those bases still remain. So, to answer your question, without the fourth story, the project doesn't go forward. The students stay at Royal Crest, but the college's ability to help deal with that as a engaged manager, I guess I would say, or the leaseor while everyone else is under a master lease would evolve dramatically over a very short period of time.
So, I'm a little bit puzzled as to why three floors versus four floors makes a financial difference for an academic institution? Are there money-making endeavors on like that first floor or that fourth floor?
No. It, it, the, um, we did the calculation last time we were at Planning Board, and we got asked this question. It's over 100 beds that get lost in that, and that just precludes the ability to get a partner who will help finance the, the project. That's it. It's just that simple.
Because then you'd still have to subsidize those 100 students somewhere else.
Well, it, there, the Gray Star wouldn't do the project. The college does, does not have the ability to bond a project of, of any size at this point. I mean, I, and this is, again, I understand, appreciate, this is not the venue to relitigate something, but when the decision, it was the college's, when the decision was at the college to abandon the corner to do Royal Crest, right? That was four years of additional renting, that was four years of additional funds. We've spent millions and millions of dollars in the hope that Royal Crest would have come to fruition. And in doing that, the housing market has adjusted enough that our ability to keep up with it has, has impacted the ability to do a project like this on our own.
And, and to, to also, your, the point on the finances, I assume that the students are renting these dorms, and so that is part of what makes, you know, contributes to the financial situation of it.
You have the first floor is, is classrooms, and the three floors on top is dorms.
On, on the, on the longer building, half is academic, the other half is housing.
Okay. Two questions, and I don't know...
Yeah.
Is it possible to go down?
Yeah. I, I, I wish it were, because if it were, this would be a, a lot easier. It would also be a, a tunnel underneath 114, then we wouldn't have to take the footbridge conversation.
I'm totally cool with that.
We, we, we would be as well. It's just not a viable option. The water table isn't, is, is too high to actually go down.
Is that water table issue an issue across all of the campus?
I, I don't want to speak on the entire campus, but I would say, um, I would say, I've been here for 13 years at the college, and nearly is there a moment in time where we're not having some conversation about water table, stormwater, and moving water? If, as you recall, Tom's presentation, he discussed how the campus portion closest to the church is higher than the corner.
Yeah.
Well, the portion of the back part of the campus where the athletic fields are is higher than any other part of the campus, and everything further up into Middleton is higher than any part of the campus, and most of the stormwater that comes across 125 actually comes to our campus. So, we've got a tremendous amount of moving water that we have to address, not just what's ours, but also what's higher up on 114 that comes our way that we end up stopping.
Okay. What about a different spot? I see on the back of Merrimack, a huge parking lot. I have no idea what's next to it in Andover.
It's protected wetlands. The built, the parking lot is literally fingered in prior to when Wetlands was established, but literally everything around that and everything to the back is wetlands.
So, basically, you'd have to win the conservation lottery.
And then some.
And then some.
So, between both buildings, it's 540 beds?
Correct.
But this doesn't get everybody out of Royal Crest?
It does not. And that, that's, this was the other hard part. I mean, we're, we're talking here about 47 feet or 49 feet. The original proposal at, at, at Royal Crest was originally 1,000.
Yeah.
And then we brought it down to 800, and that was still at 67 feet. We decided that coming in at 67 feet was probably a non-starter and not one that would be well, well-received, and so, back to that point of reasonableness, we started with what would be more reasonable. No project, a project that 67 feet would be really, really tall, and then where we are right now.
I'm not trying to do your job for you. Have you guys tried to reconfigure and change style, change... Basically, is this the, are we seeing the result of 100 different attempts of trying to make this work, and this literally comes down to being the best of the worst situations?
You're seeing, I, I, I would hesitate to call it the best of the worst. I, I would...
Sorry. I don't mean it that way.
No, no, no. I would, I, I would say there were several things that were, that were incredibly important to the college. The most important one was that there is a portal so that you could still see the front of the church, at least from the corner. That obviously impacts the location of where buildings could fit.
Can we pick the church up and move it forward?
I, I, I know many people that would be very much in favor of that.
Well, I mean, can we make that work?
I, I, I wish.
I've, I've seen houses go on trailers down 495.
How much money are you...
I wish we could. We have, we, having just remodeled the entire inside, that would be, that would be a difficult challenge, but I, again, I, I take your question to heart because we did look at a multitude of different ways to try to resolve the, the question that's being raised here, and at the end of the day, where we came down on was, we thought it was incredibly important that there was a portal. We felt it was incredibly important that there was a significant step back from the corner, at least. We felt like there needed to be space on the campus in between these buildings so that there is an actual place for students to be, so they're not, you know, out, on the outside of these buildings. We wanted to make sure that this was the front door of the campus as well as part of the front door of the town, as we argued at Royal Crest, and that obviously, again, didn't go the way that, that we had hoped, but I, I, I can't say that I could show up with 100 different versions, but this was not the first and best one we came up with. This was a, a lengthy set of conversations. The one that I showed the planning board several years ago in the middle of Royal Crest...
I saw that. Oh, I saw the one you had presented to planning. You actually put, and I didn't see it in these slides, you'd presented it back in like 2000...
Correct.
Something, and it was a bunch of different buildings.
Yes.
Some smaller ones.
Yes. It, the, the goal, the, the original idea was, um, the original idea was, was that smaller buildings, in terms of footprint, made, made some sense. The, the difference there is, we were considering apartments, and so that had a different configuration to the approach. This is more of what, without casting any dispersions on any of us, I would think many of us would understand to be a resident, holly dorm project that many of us had probably been in, right? One room, two beds, two closets, two bureaus. It's really just the bathroom configuration that alters between the, the two buildings. And, and that was done because trying to do apartments not only would change the configuration of the buildings, but it would be significantly less beds, which would translate to significantly less human beings coming out of Royal Crest.
So, the work that was done, more, I, I don't know how to describe it other than more interior and where, I'm going to call them apartments. Are, are those apartments that were created, they went up, I don't know, five, seven, eight, 10 years ago? They're, they're around the parking lot, I'm going to say, near your cafeteria, I think?
Yeah. The, what we call self-residential village, they would, I would describe them...
Are they apartments?
The, um...
Or are they, are they...
There, there's suites, there's a living room but no kitchen. It's three bedrooms on two floors.
Another way to look at it. Another way to look at it, though. I mean, so like, I'm going to say per square feet, how many students are there? And then how many per square feet would be in these?
I don't have the exact figures in front of me, but I would say this is more efficient in terms of beds to square feet than those are.
Okay, well, and I guess are those, I'm going to call them apartments, is the creation of the apartments, if that would have been dormitories, would the number of students be doubled? Or, I mean, conceivably, what's the capacity?
Again, I would rather come back and give you that exact figure, but I would just paraphrase it. It would not be, it's not a two-for-one. It would not be a two-for-one. There's, in what we call self-residential villages, again, are those wooden facilities with the porches on them. I'm going to, there's three hundred and fifty beds in the five buildings that are there. I'm guessing if we had sought to do that a little differently, all that would happen would be small living room would end up being a fourth bedroom, and so, I don't know, you're talking maybe going from three fifty to four, four twenty-five max.
Yeah, I was just curious. That's probably the newest housing on the campus.
So the first floor that's not residential, is that academic classroom?
The glass face that you see here is academic classroom, but we're trying to build as a living and learning community where students are engaged in tapping on the rest of the building.
So no retail or...
There's no retail in the facility. There might be a small gym and some office space for residential life folks and things like that. But there's no outside retail. There's no reason to come in and use any space there.
Okay, and if you go to the next slide, the aerial view?
Yep.
I would have left that one out, because that left building is massive, and that just shows me how big it is. Is that going to be the biggest building on campus, other than the gym and the ice rink?
It'll be the longest building. I don't know if it'll be the largest square foot facility. I would imagine that it's not as large as the Marimac Athletic Complex, which is what you're talking about. It might not be as big as the Sakowich Center, but it certainly would be top three or four.
Right. Well, I would just say, you had me the whole way until I saw that and how that dwarfs over that church and the other buildings on campus. And my only other comment would be, as you come up 114, you're lower in that intersection when you come up. So that's just going to be that much projected higher than it actually is, but I would have left that slide out.
Well, I appreciate it. The planning board obviously wants to see, you know, the whole thing, and we don't want to shortchange what you're all seeing.
Well, some of us watch planning boards, so you know, you're out of luck on that anyway.
We want you to say when it went up.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know. I get it.
505 Sutton Street. Oh, wait, what am I talking about? It's right there.
Yeah, I know. It's right there. I'm well aware. I might have heard about 505 Sutton Street during the Royal Crest project on more than one occasion.
Okay. I forgot we're at the senior center, the new senior center, and not... So yeah, that's 505 for... Okay, we do have to call it. I apologize.
No, no, I appreciate this opportunity, and obviously, we didn't think we would resolve everything in one meeting, so...
So one of the things I can tell you, I want to see what we're dealing with, with the 114.
That's fine.
And I hate the idea of making you guys maybe do more work, but as another board member said, that height, I almost, and I'm probably going to get slaughtered for this, but I almost question whether I would rather see another building to be able to reduce the height. I don't know if that's a possibility.
Then we might lose all view of the church or anything like that.
But you know, there's space on the other side of the building on Andover Street. I don't know if almost like flipping them...
Yeah, again...
The height just, it kills me. I'm going to drive by this, and it's going to kill me, because I do it all the time. The height is so overpowering on that intersection, and I'm not saying nothing, obviously. And I understand what we're dealing with when we're dealing with Dover and the reasonableness standard. And when I look at 114 and I look at the buildings we have on 114...
I would just say, and I know we have to go, it is the Royal Crest project. I've done developments, and I've been for many boards in a lot of places. And what Royal Crest successfully made, we realize, is avoid going to them as best you possibly can. And the only thing I can say is, we're here because we were unsuccessful in figuring out how to make a project work to do the things that we said, I myself said from the podium, we were going to do if that project didn't move forward. And we could not figure out how to do that in a way that did not bring us before you tonight, and so that's where we're stuck. So we, you get me unfortunately, and all joking aside, I am serious in the sense that this was the best that we could accomplish to be able to meet all the demands that were placed on us going through an arduous process once before, and we're happy to come back and talk about any aspect of it and go from there.
You have to have, basically, your biggest thing is four floors. With no ifs, ands, and buts. There's, I mean, there's no budget, is what you're basically saying perhaps.
Yeah, yes. I mean, the college, without getting into all the financial specifics, at the end of the day, this is what is commonly known as the third-party housing deal, right? We're the, we're holding the land. We are the ones that have the students in them. We're the ones that are managing them and then running them. But it's a third party in association with the college that's actually bonding it. The college doesn't have the ability to do that. We wouldn't have, by the way, at Royal Crest. This is not uncommon thing for anybody.
But who's picking the design?
Both the college and the third party.
So it's not, the third party isn't just being like, all right, hey, we're throwing up a building. This is what we're throwing up. You guys are going to suck it up.
No, no, no. I would never suggest that. I would just suggest that at the end of the day, there's a number of beds that have to be hit to make it financially viable, and that's where we continue to get stuck.
And you'll still have, if I remember going back to the Royal Crest days, you had like eight or nine hundred students at Royal Crest.
So the college leases, as a master lease, what I'll call approximately six hundred beds, right? There is a number of students that do not lease through us. Royal Crest or Aimco, the parent company, does not share with the college, never did, even in the midst of a burgeoning partnership. Never and cannot share how many students lease on their own. I've always estimated that just beyond the mailings that we send out. You can follow a lot by where you send a tuition bill.
Royal Crest is making out.
Right. We always assumed that was somewhere around the two hundred or so. The original thousand that we put in was both a projection on our end and was financially what they thought they needed to make the project work. We brought it down to eight hundred, because they thought politically that would make some sense. That obviously didn't matter at all, but that's where those numbers come from. They're not really based on what the college's engagement to the property is.
So six hundred is Marimac, then there are those that rent, which we don't know.
Yeah, correct. And I would imagine that with a project like this, there would still be some number of students over there. And I think there is a differing opinion that exists everywhere about whether it is better to have students leasing on their own and not the college in between, or better to have the college in between from an oversight perspective. And there are some people who think that the college could do better at that, and there are some people who are like, no, no, there should be more of that.
So we are five minutes from ten, just so we know.
The enrollment there is now...
The undergrad enrollment's thirty-eight fifty, roughly.
I remember when it was twenty-five hundred, so you've grown pretty substantially.
Yes. We are one of the fastest-growing institutions, fastest-comprehensive institutions in the country, which is what has made us strong and financially viable in a very, very, very difficult and very changing higher education environment.
I'm going to move that we continue to 114.
Can I have a second? All in favor?
Any other questions?
Off the top of my head, just...
That's fine. I get the gist. We'll come back to this.
Hold on. Ron, can I have a vote from you? Okay, aye. I don't think I have to do... Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We are adjourned until November fourteenth. Thank you, everybody.